The Amherst School Committee meeting to order at 7:01. And I just want to welcome everybody back from a restful break from school committee work anyway. I know a lot of you have been busy with other things, but so first we'll have an agenda review. Are there any questions or comments about the agenda? No?
The acronym.
Yeah, I know.
I'll figure I'll get it.
I know, I know, I know. Okay. And then, so now we just need to approve the minutes from May 15th and June 26th. Were there any questions or comments about the minutes? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I move to accept the minutes from May 15th, 2012, and June 26th, 2012.
Second.
Okay. All those in, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Great, unanimous. Now we'll have public comment. I just want to remind people that it's a school committee policy that school committee does not respond generally to public comment, but we will listen respectfully and take notes. I ask that you come to the microphone and identify yourselves and limit your comments to three minutes. And just a reminder that we can talk about things and, but we try to, we stay away from talking about people and naming people, so.
Vincent O'Connor, Summer Street, a precinct one town meeting member. Two items, I want to express my concern about the manner in which the school committee meeting that preceded the meeting, whose minutes you just, the June meeting, whose minutes you just approved, was canceled despite the presence in the town of Aquorum. It appears as though from the newspapers that people who were concerned about what was going to go on with the after-school programs were apparently do not, it became clear that they were going to come and protest at the meeting and the meeting was canceled. And I don't know whether there is a something, relationship between those two things, but it didn't look good and it made it appear as though the school committee was trying to hide from the citizenry of the town, which I think is not a good thing. The second comment I'd have is that as a town meeting member, I do remember that we had, we had to take money out of the reserves to approve, I think, the elementary school budget to get a sufficient amount of money. And I read, I think, last week that another $100,000 administrative position has been created. And I just want to express my distress as a town meeting member, given all the discussions about the administrative situation with the school district, not only the numbers, but the apparent differential between our school districts and other school districts of similar sizes in Western Mass, that it's a very distressing thing. And I would hope that there is, one, some explanation about not just why it's being done, but where is the money coming from? What is, what is not going to be done? Are the athletic teams going to have to raise $150,000 rather than 50 to support the athletic programs? That answer and information was not in the newspapers. And so I hope that in some way it's forthcoming because I think we apparently were shown one thing and now we're getting something else. And I would be very concerned if any activities that we have been assured were class size issues and so forth, were not going to be affected and now we have another $100,000 positions and some things are being chopped. And so I would urge the school committee to address that issue at some level at some point, lest people who vote for your budget get to the point where they cannot, in good conscience, give, give you the authority to do stuff because they don't trust what you're going to do.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Eileen Marasco and I have a question for you. Have you folks already received the school improvement plan presentations from the elementary school teachers? Or the, okay, or elementary school principals? No? Okay. I just would hope that the product of a meeting that we had in August 2nd with some concerned parents from Fort River, discussing the dysfunction in the building and in the atmosphere and the climate there, would be incorporated into the school improvement plan that Principal Hall will be presenting. Maria did offer up perhaps the formation of a parent advisory board that would be helpful in facilitating better communication there in the building. And I would just hope that that would not be lost in the sauce and that that would become a part of the school improvement plan. And I'll just pass this over. You folks can pass it along there if you'd like to take a look at it. This was just something that Ms. Garrett did not feel was appropriate to look at, at that meeting, but it is the result of the TEL survey of the building regarding different aspects of professional development, teaching, the atmosphere in the buildings, sense of trust and leadership and other issues in terms of building climate as well as the different issues that would affect the professionals in the building, facilities, resources, that sort of thing. Apparently, there was not a high enough response rate from Cracker Farm or Wildwood to look at those buildings comparatively, but there was a 75% response rate. And I know Principal Hall worked very hard to get all of her staff that were available, that were eligible to respond, to respond to it. And I've just kind of marked some of the areas toward the back pages where you might see some of the results that would be concerning. So I just pass that over to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll be seeing full results.
Thanks, thank you, Eileen. Okay. All right. So now let's move on to our superintendent's update.
Okay, so I will pass these out to people. And then maybe, Debbie, if you wouldn't mind just passing that, actually, I'm going to give you some of these too. Thank you. Okay, so a few updates to note. First, I just want to say a public thank you. At the end of the school year, we had an ice cream social where we asked staff to come and just be appreciated where we were serving ice cream. And we had three groups who provided free the donations for our teachers. And Harold's Ice Cream of Northampton, Froyo World, and Go Berry Frozen Yogurt were kind enough to provide the goodies for our staff on a really hot day to come after work and be recognized by those of us who were scooping. So we want to thank them very much for, for providing that wonderful treat. Also, I just wanted to formally invite people, the convocation, which is the start of our school year, is on Wednesday, August 29th, and where all our faculty and staff come together. And we have a brief opening ceremony, which is an hour long, that we'd love to have school committee members come to. We get to the building around eight and we start promptly at 8:30 and it goes until 9:30. So again, if you're able to join us, we'd love that. And we'd love to have you acknowledged. Again, first day celebration, for those of you who have been involved in the past and for the community, the 29th, which again is Wednesday, the evening, 5:30 to 7 on the Town Common, we will again be celebrating our students coming back to school and it's a community celebration. We are working with many of our partners to, who will be having booths set up around the common for families to be able to gather information. We will be having Amherst, Family Outreach of Amherst will be there, which we will be showing our new outreach van, which I'll mention a little bit further down. We also have Big Brothers, Big Sisters who comes. We have a representation from higher ed. We have a lot of our athletes from UMass, Amherst College, who come and provide, do activities with the kids on the common. And we'll have musical performances from many of our high school students and some parent groups. So it's an amazing opportunity for people to come and show their support of our children entering back into a school year. So we hope you all will come. And it's very kind of a low-key night. If, in case there is rain, we will be doing that at the high school cafeteria, just in case. But there'll be sunny weather, I'm sure. Also Backpack Project 2012, as many of you know, for the past, I think, two years, this is our third year? So many, it blends together after a while. You know, our community has really come together to provide school supplies, backpacks, and fully packed with school supplies for the start of the school year for students, kindergarten through high school. And to provide them initially to offer for families who are income-eligible and who, really, this is a very large expense. I mean, we all know when we're providing supplies for our kids to start, it's, it is substantial. And our community members, individuals, we had parents come in and drop off supplies. We've had groups such as, you know, the colleges and institutions of higher learning. We had the Lions Club. We've had the Rotary Club who donated, I think, about 100 backpacks, fully stocked this year again. We had different locations where people have dropped off backpacks at Orthodontist's Office, Hampshire College, our interfaith groups, and many, many other places. And we really greatly appreciate their support. We have handed out about 400 backpacks at this point to our children. And partnering with the Amherst Police Department, UMass Police Department, Holyoke Fire Department, and Springfield Safe Seats, the police were on hand to fit car seats and booster seats for families who needed and wanted to have updated seats for their kids. And they handed out about 40 seats. So we had two days when this was happening and it was a huge success. And we also want to say to the public that we do accept additional supplies throughout the year. And for families, we do continue to pass out backpacks. So if someone hasn't picked up their backpack, you know, they can just give a call to Kim Stender and they can look on the website and Kim will make sure that people are provided with those great resources. So we want to thank everyone for really, again, contributing to the start of the school year for our students. We had two amazing summer interns, which I know you all received, I think, an email from Kim. We had Harmony Jean Charland from UMass, who's an Americor Vista student. And we had Tia and Busby from Amherst College from their Citizen Summer Program. And these two young women were spectacular. And they worked with us over the summer around our MCN work, around our Backpack Project. You'll see that we had them on Amherst Media, who was gracious enough to have them interviewed. There were a couple articles written about them. And it was amazing to not only see these college students who were so committed to giving back to, in this case, the public schools, but also their, their commitment to being part of a community in the long term, talking about their future and what they hope for the future was really inspiring. And they added an amazing energy to Central Office. So we are thrilled and we thank very much UMass and Amherst College for providing us with those interns free of charge. And they were unbelievably helpful for us. We will be having another intern, I know from UMass, over the course of a year and we're looking forward to welcoming her on as well. I want to mention briefly that our alumni directory, I think I mentioned before, we were having an updated alumni directory, which happens every so many years. I was supposed to bring it to show you, but we do have that completed at this point. And we will be joining with Amherst Education Foundation for a kickoff event in the fall, looking for alumni giving. And we'll have a music and art performance around the time of homecoming, when people come back and do have a lot of their reunions. So we'll be working with Amherst Education Foundation and they will be kind of the conduit for the majority of the giving. But we thank them for stepping up and many, many of our alumni have been, have requested these updated versions too and they're very excited about the opportunity of reconnecting. And some of our themes this year for our opening day convocation is having our alumni to really kind of envision where our, our children can be in their future and how we as a school community and as a wider community help to support and shape students envisioning where they can be in the future, where they want to be in the future and who they will become. So we'll be having some of our alumni speak to that point at convocation. It may just be quotes, but people have sent in information for us to include, so it's really kind of powerful. So the Outreach Mobile that I mentioned earlier, many of you have heard me talk about this for a couple of years now, that we've, we had a kind of a brainstorm when we were working with a partnership with Amherst, Outreach of Amherst, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We were working with Department of Children and Families and a number of groups. And we were saying that in Amherst to really provide outreach to many, many families. We have to have a way of going to families. And many of our complexes and apartments in town do not have a community room or a location where people can go and meet families and provide supports and services and really hear from families of what they need from the school and from the town. So we were fortunate that Family Outreach worked closely with their funding and their funding organization of C-H-D. And we were finally able to realize that they have provided a van. So we are kicking off a partnership and asking for our community members to come together and to really think about what we could, what this van and this opportunity could become in terms of a partnership. And we'll be working with the town of Amherst and the Health Department and just thinking about what, what might be of support to families. And we will and have been reaching out to families to ask what would be, because again, we don't want to make assumptions of what would be helpful, but we really need to hear from the community so that we can partner to make a difference. So it's kind of a creative option and people are very excited. And that, that van will be parked at the first day, first night celebration so people can see. And we will be asking for suggestions of naming the van. My suggestions of like the Partridge Family or the, you know, that stuff didn't go. So I think we need to come up with some ways that maybe some community members or some kids can say, here's what we should call this. But it has amazing opportunities, potentials for helping out our families and kids. The last two items I just wanted to mention briefly are, one is kind of a reinvigoration of the Latino Student Achievement Initiative that began in 2006 under Superintendent Jerry Hoffman. And there have been many families who have really raised the issue of wanting to keep that initiative moving when we were noticing disparities between Latino students in terms of achievement, discipline, records, and other ways that we're noticing, noticing a gap. So Marta raised kind of the question of, let's reinvigorate. And she would lead this charge to think about and work with a group of interested school, school members, staff members, as well as community members, to really think about a holistic approach to partnering with families and with students, specifically the many Latino groups that we have representing in our community. So Marta will be kind of reinvigorating that work. And I know that they are setting up a meeting at the end of August to begin taking some steps. Also, I think I've mentioned to the committee earlier, we had, I know there's been many, many groups working in our community around issues of race, proficiency for all students, moving, identifying that there really shouldn't be very, any variance or predictable variance in, in how we look at the achievement of our, of our children and participation and access to school opportunities. So when we started to really look at our equity work and we started to create some action plans within, I like to say like kind of the sphere of our influence, within our, our walls and our doors, you know, bringing Ron Ferguson in and some other people to really start engaging us in a conversation, it became clear that, that we needed to not only work within our world, but also to really engage the larger community, which I know has occurred in the past. And many people have said to me that we didn't quite get it right in the past. So there's a commitment to continuing a conversation around issues of race and class and achievement. So my five college advisory group, we kind of brainstormed some, some next steps in this area. And Carol Soles and John Rife from UMass have really stepped up with Sally Perdomo and brought in two other professors who are very skilled in intercultural dialogue, cross-cultural dialogue, with students, with community members, and with staff and faculty. And I'm not going to remember both people, Leda Cook and Jimena Zuniga. I think I did, did I do that? Okay, I got it. Okay, so we have these two professors who have joined our group now. So we are in the process actively of talking about how can we create opportunities for meaningful dialogue within our schools, with students, within our schools for staff, and then also connecting with the broader community. And you'll see, it's really to build stronger relationships built, built on trust, to learn about different cultures that are represented in our schools and to do a better job of making strong connections with families, to be able to talk honestly about issues of race and racial differences, and to confront barriers that are in schools right now that are affecting student achievement and to promote apparent involvement. And then we want to find some common ground and, and from that common ground to create some action steps. So this group is very committed. We wanted to make sure that we started some tangible, created a tangible timeline leading up to the 2013 Student Conference, the MCN Conference, and then going past that conference. Many of the school systems that have engaged and had student conference come to their communities have, have engaged in such a process to make the conversation not just a school-specific conversation. How do we strengthen what we are providing for all of our students? And how do we strengthen the pipeline to college and to other opportunities in our community? So I just did want to tell you that that was gaining some traction and this.
And Michael Burkhardt as well.
Yeah, Michael Burkhardt is part of, we have community members part of this group. Michael Burkhardt joins us. Other community members who are very interested in Michael has been providing the school system this year with some work, starting with our leadership group around issues of equity. And we've started very concretely around noticing around issues of equity within the leadership team. And he's going to be working with us over the course of the year. And he's very generous to give his time without fee, which is wonderful. So again, he's been very committed to our community for a long time, as many of you have worked with Michael. So we are really accessing the expertise of our community and higher ed and the commitment of families and students and staff to really, to reinvigorate and start to have a conversation that can helpfully create some actionable steps. So we're, I think we have another meeting later this week. And hopefully I'll have something a little more concrete to present to the whole committee shortly.
Thank you.
Those are my updates.
Couple of questions on one item.
Yes.
Has someone been designated to kind of lead up the alumni development campaign?
Well, Amherst Education Foundation will be working with us, but Kim Stender is really kind of the conduit. But again, we would love any volunteers or people who are interested in helping us to really think a little more broadly around how to really connect with alumni. So if there are suggestions.
Volunteers could kind of, or suggestions could kind of funnel into Kim.
Please. Absolutely.
And are we setting a target goal? Are we saying for 2012 or 2013, we're going for a million? Are we setting, you know, are we setting one of those?
I would love to set that goal. You know, personally, I really don't have, I guess, let me say it this way. Amherst Education Foundation is very interested in expanding their, in expanding their giving, the giving that has been coming into their foundation, and wants to be very realistic about wanting to do this well. So I would love to go, you know, gung ho, but I also want to take measurable steps that are attainable. So if, if we have some suggestions of what we think are attainable, I think starting with an activity that's open to the public, because again, I didn't want to sell tickets. I didn't want to have this be, I wanted it to be truly a community, everyone could access, event that's free. And that can kick off some conversations around alumni giving and then see where we go from there. But a million sounds wonderful to me, actually. But any suggestions and if, if there are specific suggestions of people who have had much more experience in this world around this topic than I have, it would be greatly appreciated. Yes, Eric.
So on the last, in the community conversations about race and ethnicity, you know, we get these reports every so often from Marta, usually equity. So will we be hearing reports from this group, this meeting instead, more or less?
You'll be, you'll be hearing, the equity work is going to be kind of multi-layered. This will be one layer of work, which will be, you know, facilitating conversations to have input and continued dialogue around this topic. Then you'll also hear some of the very specifics that's, Marta's work is very much embedded in the district improvement plan now. So when I come before you in a few weeks, you'll see a much more focused district improvement plan where you'll be able to make the connections with Ron Ferguson's, the movement, around how you affect change within our doors and within the broader community. So yeah, you'll hear both, but I think it'll be much, a much kind of cleaner picture.
And you met over the summer some more with Ron Ferguson, right?
Our leadership team, which was not me attending this one, but the principals and Marta. So every school was represented and Marta went to a four-day institute with Ron Ferguson. That was really powerful. And when they came back, the work that they kind of debriefed with me really strengthened some of the goal focus areas around needing to focus on use, the use of data in our schools, which is a piece of Mike's position, which is how do you really create a data system and a data-wise system where you're really looking not only at how you're using data to inform instruction at the classroom level, but how are you monitoring the progress of the district and schools around what you hope to see move and shift? Also, another area of focus was really around parent engagement. How are we connecting with families to, to create meaningful connections that affect and impact achievement? So you'll see in, when I bring to you the reorganization of Central Office staff and who's holding what areas of the world, you'll see that very clearly articulated on the plan and it's connected very much to Ron's work. And Dr. Ferguson's also extended that he would be happy to review the district improvement plan and give me feedback. So I'm waiting to get a date from him that I'm hopefully going to see him over the next few weeks myself and have him take a look and give me some feedback. So he's very committed to our, to our district.
Yeah, it sounds great.
Yeah, it is, it's wonderful. It's very, really invigorating. People are really excited about the work.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Melia.
Well, thank you.
I'm going to follow up on two things. One is that, you know, I have been part of this community conversation about race and ethnicity, which I found very, I've learned a lot and I continue to learn. And I was listening to some of the work that people did with Ron Ferguson. And so in light of that and thinking about our role as school committee members and this notion of parent engagement, I have decided that I'm going to do a public office hours. And I'm going to start with once a month, Thursday mornings at 7:30 for a couple hours at the Loose Goose. And I invite any other school committee member who is interested or willing to either join me at those hours or create your own. Or we can work out some sort of schedule perhaps where, you know, we can take different times and days. Just so that there's a place where people can come and talk or share their concerns or comments or have a conversation. So that, I wanted to announce that and that'll start in September. And I just wanted to let everybody know that there's an updated committee meeting schedule, which we don't have copies of tonight.
I can send out to people.
With sort of the agenda and the way that meetings, we're going to have more joint meetings this year, which I think makes a lot of sense. And so that we can be more efficient about how reports get presented, basically.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
For one minute, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
I also just wanted to mention, when I was meeting with the three chairs, but also with the leadership team this week, which was very helpful too, that Michael was part of when I presented the district improvement plan in its draft form to the, to the leadership team, asking for their feedback and warmly cool feedback. to the leadership team, asking for their feedback, and warmly cool feedback, um, to revise my document, um, which you have to model what you expect. So, um, never comfortable, but we did it, and, and Michael was, it was great for him to be able to see, hear the whole picture as well. One of the suggestions that came from Mark Jackson, and we talked about it for a while, is how do we want to present, um, the district improvement plan and the school improvement plans this year? And what we've chosen to do is on the, the joint meeting that we have in September, which is toward the end of September, we're going to present, um, the district improvement plan and the school improvement plans in one meeting. Because what we're going to try to do is connect the dots and really talk about the foundation in which you're building, you know, your efforts, your reform efforts. And then I can speak to the district, and as I go through each district goal, then the principals will make the connections to the school goals. So you're going to really be able to see the strong through lines of, um, the work that we're all trying to do. And you'll also see, when we get to the place of looking at the educator evaluation system, you'll see the through lines of superintendent, principal, educator, and it's, you'll see the lines clearly. So I think it'll make sense to start to really paint that picture in a way that, um, it's taken a while to try to kind of crystallize how you can really paint this picture where it's, um, you know, clearly articulated. So we're going to try that on the, the last, we'll see how it goes, but I, I think it is promising. Um, and we will spend, the leadership team will spend a lot of time between now and that date, really thinking about a presentation that would be helpful. Um, so, we're going to do our best for that.
Pack a bag for that.
Yeah, exactly.
I recommend not having anything else.
Nothing else is on at night. That is the only item, and I won't even do updates. So we're going to get started right away and have-
Excellent. Okay, thank you. So, moving on, we have, um, an item about excess, um-
Surplus.
Surplus, excuse me. Non-excess, never excess, surplus equipment. And, um, as you can see, uh, this is a very old vehicle, um, but, and we need to vote in, in order to remove it. Um, and, yes, Rick.
I move to declare the 1985 International Bluebird School Bus VIN number 1HVLPHXM4VHA40640 is obsolete and to direct the Director of Finance and Operations to auction off, donate or otherwise dispose of this material in conjunction with provisions of MGL 30B.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Great, thank you. Ananmas.
But you might like to know, Mr. DeWaller told me that they have someone who potentially may haul that away and pay the district five hundred dollars for this.
Wow. So, that's a win-win.
That's wonderful.
Great, thank you.
Excellent. Oh, can I, can I say one other surplus thing? Just, can I jump in for one?
Sure.
Also, if you will notice when you come to the middle school, that the old modular that was on the side of the middle school is no longer. It is gone. So that leaking building that was sitting there is, they took that away this summer, and again, someone took that away.
Completely changes the look.
It's amazing. Oh, it's really nice, actually. So, speaking of surplus.
Yes. Um, so now we're going to have an enrollment update.
Yep.
From Maria.
Um, do you, did you make copies of the enrollment?
I did.
How? Did I not pass it? Oh, they're under here, I'm sorry. So, okay, so given, this is the time of the year where we start to become a little firmer with our members. Again, we still watch very closely for, um, the next two weeks, because we do have movement, um, in particular, some, um, graduate students and others come in with children and, you know, spit, we're, we're fairly firm. So at this point, I wanted to show you, um, a draft of where we are, and to orient you to this document, um, you look across, you know, you see each of the schools going down, Crocker Farm, Fort River, Wildwood, and you see the total. Across the top, you see K through six with totals. So, um, orientation, if you look at Crocker Farm Kindergarten, the, the left boxes, there are thirty-nine students, there are two sections, two classrooms, so that class size average is nineteen point five. So you'll, if you take a scan down that column, it's helpful to see what the class sizes are for the other elementary schools at this time. Um, so you'll see that in, at the element, at kindergarten, we're around between seventeen and twenty. Um, first grade is, is pretty solidly around seventeen students per class, grade two, sixteen per class across schools. Uh, Crocker Farm has the hive twenty-three, and, and grade three, there's twenty at Fort River and twenty point seven, twenty, twenty and twenty-one at, uh, Wildwood. Uh, fourth grade, you can see twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. Fifth grade, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, and sixth grade, twenty-two, twenty, eighteen. Um, these numbers, I have to say, are much more consistent than I've seen them in years past, with less variance across schools. Uh, we did fill twenty-five school choice slots that are included in these numbers, which helps us to level out a little bit. Um, you'll see that there is a, um, the Crocker Farm third grade classroom is a place where we will be adding additional paraprofessional support to help out. Sixth grade at Crocker, there's some configurations that they're working on because to provide smaller groups during the academic blocks. Um, and Wildwood, I think it's their third grade, um, there are places where additional classroom paraprofessional support has been added. Again, I work very closely with the principals when they talk to me. Numbers don't mean everything, it's very much about the composition of, of children and their needs. So when a principal comes to me and says, you know, yes, we have twenty students in that classroom, which doesn't look like an excessive numbers, because these numbers are very, very comfortable, um, but there may be, the composition requires additional support. So we are making those adjustments at this point, if I need to add additional support with the principals. So at this point, I think there are two classrooms, actually, one, two, probably about five classrooms where I'm looking at some additional support based on configurations of students, um, which will be solidified over the next, um, week or so, once we see who enters and leaves. Um, so we do expect there'll be some transition, but right now, um, we're very comfortable. And if it stays, you know, if the numbers stay the way they are, we're off to a, a strong start in the school year. Um, if we had a few additional choice students, I might place them in a couple, um, grades, second grade in particular. Um, but I think overall, uh, we're within kind of the, the zone by which, you know, we had the conversation last year around class optimal, class size, we're within that, the ranges. But we will watch very closely over the next two weeks to see, um, how things, um, you know, shake out, because a few new students in one grade level can make a difference. So we'll be, um, really careful with that.
Yes.
So, uh, what is, what is the cutoff point for school choice? I guess I need to know a little bit more about that. What, obviously, if someone moves into town, and they move in, that they're in our, an hour, but, so-
If we have open slots and a student, say, in September wants to join, we would, if we don't have anyone else on the waiting list, we would, we would fill that slot.
We would.
Yes. But again, I'm, as you've noticed, you know, I know people were really concerned when we were putting choice in.
Right.
I've been very conservative with the numbers that I've, I've placed. So again, I would go to the principal who would check with the classroom teachers just to see if the configuration, you know what I mean? But yes, we would.
Yeah.
Um, so, and we'll see over the next two weeks, because there may be families out there who hear this and say, oh, maybe I want to check out second grade.
Yep.
You'll revisit us with this later in September?
Absolutely.
Firm numbers are October, right?
Yes. October one is our real firm, but I, every meeting for the next, um, probably, uh, two months, I'll be bringing you an updated enrollment, because we won't settle in for another few weeks anyway.
Yeah.
But it's helpful, I think, to see that ebb and flow. And then when we get to budget time, we'll be looking at this closely, and I will also, as we move into December or so, I'll be consciously thinking about, you know, these classrooms where a principal may say it's a little challenging, so that we can project, project and predict what we need for the following year. Um, because sometimes, you know, a, a bubble of students follows year to year, and at certain points, it may become more problematic. Um, we had a conversation the other day about even, you know, as kids grow, their bodies become bigger, and having a space, you know, twenty, twenty-five, whatever, twenty-four in second grade may feel very different than in sixth grade. So, yeah, so we have to consider all of that. But as budget time, we, we get more heavily into budget, um, we'll be watching these numbers again, and I'll be talking with principals to see how the classrooms are functioning.
Yeah.
But right now, we're feeling, um, very comfortable. These are, um, from our perspective, very reasonable numbers.
Rick.
Um, kindergarten for, uh, Crocker Farm and Wildwood may be like a tad high, but one question on that. Are, do we take any choice kids in kindergarten?
I think we took, uh, we took some in, uh, Fort River, I believe. Yeah, we did take seven choice students in kindergarten. I believe they were at Fort River, but I could check which school. Um, I believe it was Fort River. So we, we typically have around twenty in kindergarten, anywhere from, you know, I think our guidelines were anywhere from seventeen to twenty-one in kindergarten was our, kind of our comfort zone, not that we couldn't go outside, but we would think about additional support. I'm hesitant to move students if I don't have to across schools, but in some cases, we do. Um, so if it were a situation where we received a few new students, we would then consider, um, should they start at Fort River versus, say, Crocker? Um, but at this point, twenty, I'm, I'm okay with, and the principals are as well.
Another question was, last year, there was a particular class, I'm drawing a blank, what class and what school?
Yeah.
Does anybody remember?
Fort River.
No, we got, we, and we got an email requesting, I don't remember, but I remember it was received an email.
It was-
Requesting the addition of another, another classroom.
Yeah, last year, it was the concern around, uh, first grade, and now second grade at Fort River, which now is at sixteen point seven students and three section, uh-
Three classes, right.
Yeah. So that one is, is, so three sections, yeah, I'm sorry, three sections.
So do we go from two to three?
Yes.
Oh, excellent.
Yes. And then, um, we're watching closely Crocker Farm third grade and looking at additional s, uh, support at this moment, paraprofessional support. The sixth grade, while the number at Crocker does not look terribly high, you know, we're looking at some configurations, and then, um, the-
Wildwood fourth-
Wildwood fourth grade, while it's not, uh, oh, no, I'm sorry, Wildwood third grade, while it's not a terribly high number, um, we're providing some additional support based on configuration. But again, we will watch, um, over time. And again, I'll rely on the principals to let me know if they're, um, experiencing some, some concerns.
Yep.
And, and parents, you know, parents come forward, and, and it's helpful to hear what their children's experience, um, has been. So, um, we will be doing that as well.
I just have a question, um, which is not actually about class size. I'm looking at, um, Wildwood.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and sixth grade looks, I mean, eighteen, uh, point three is, is great.
Um, but, but the fact that there are four classes, that there are twenty-two classrooms
now, is that, I don't know what the, sort of how many classrooms were last year, and-
Did we reflect that the, did that classroom number go down from when we reduced one? I don't know.
Uh-huh.
I'd have to, I'd have to add. Hold on a second. No, twenty-two classrooms, it is, um, one less than we had projected-
Okay.
-for this coming year. And we also did make the move, um, of the Ames Program transitioning to Fort River.
Right.
So Wildwood is not, there's not a concern around classroom space.
Right, okay, great.
And it, we're fine.
That's right. I'd forgotten about the Ames move. Okay.
Yeah, it's really, it's one less classroom that we had anticipated.
Yeah.
We reduced, and again, I, I, week to week, I'm looking at numbers, so we may, at two weeks ago, have planned to have, you know, three sections or four sections, and I reduced based on enrollments. And it's a hard thing for the faculty, because their, their assignment may change, but it has to be about using the resources, you know, efficiently.
Yep.
So, um, can I take a minute to introduce someone who-
Absolutely.
-you may not have met? This is the other Anne Marie Foley.
Ah.
So who will be joining as an interim co-principal at Crocker this year. So Amherst School Committee, welcome.
Welcome.
So while, while she's walking in, I thought we should.
Great.
Thank you for letting me do that.
Can I ask a quick question? Who is the Ames Program at Fort River?
I can-
Can we, can we talk about that?
We'll take it offline.
Yeah. We'll talk about, can we talk about it after the meeting? I'll hang around.
Okay. I know other people on TV, and you know what I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks. Well, um, okay, moving on, um, are we accepting gifts?
Yes, we are.
I'm going to sort it out somewhere. Okay.
I note that we accept, um, gifts made, um, to Crocker Farm in honor of Paul Wiley, to Crocker Farm at the principal's discretion, to the Laurie Rabbit Stream Scholarship Fund, and to Ford River at the principal's discretion, uh, as presented in our documents. Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to a very long list of policies. Um, many of these policies have been voted already by the region, um, but Debbie reminded me rightly that, um, Lawrence and Shabazz may not have been on the regional committee at the time that these were approved. So, um, I am perfectly open to, um, using this as a first read, and we can vote on them at another time, or if you've read through them and feel comfortable, we could vote tonight. Um, I'll sort of leave it up to the committee to discuss.
Were you looking, were you looking for, um, individual, uh, going down them individually, one by one? Were you trying to do them as a group?
Um, well, if we were, if you felt comfortable with all of them, we could vote as a group, um, but we can certainly have a discussion about each of them or the ones that, um, there is, there are discussion points about before we get to that committee. And Lawrence, you're on the policy committee, so I don't know if you've seen these.
I have.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm quite comfortable. And actually, the, I think the, the executive session, isn't that, I think that's new, per the Attorney General's.
Right.
These are, these are some language changes-
Right.
-that, uh, that are a response to the Attorney General's decisions, some of her decisions.
My understanding is that most of these things are chan, slight changes or adjustments.
Changes, right.
Right.
And one of them is, do we have, Debbie would know, there's one that we, I don't know if it's just the regional committee or if all the committees, have to vote on by September first? Is that Michael's law? Is that what-
That has to be voted first by the region-
It does.
...before it's presented to the others, so it will be presented next.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And then we have one that we're going to delete.
The last, the last two policies, Ms. Appley, um-
Are just for Amherst.
The only-
Yes, yeah.
This is your first time to see this.
Yes, so we won't vote on those.
I wanted to make sure.
Yes, we won't vote on those. So are there questions? Yeah, Rick.
If there aren't any questions, I was going to make the motion to approve them as a lump, but I won't do that. If there are questions.
I don't have any questions, but I do think the, I've read closely the executive session rules, and I think it's a vast improvement over what, what existed before.
Oh, good.
Just expedites them. It makes, in our policy subcommittee meeting, we were talking about minutes that were, that have been buried sometimes. Uh, someone, a superintendent, a chair of the committee will come in and find minutes from executive sessions that, I guess they're fairly minor issues, but they build up four or five years, and I think what's great about this is it just, uh, for the sake of disclosure, for the sake of transparency, it just moves that process along and just says, let's just do that. So I, I think it's improving, so.
Much improved, yep. Good.
So I think if we could at least approve that tonight, although I'd be comfortable with approving all of them.
Shabazz, do you have thoughts or questions?
Um, there are some, I was mentioning the, the acronyms, you know, I've seen some of this when I received the, uh, the red book, and I know it's part of how these different things are coded or tabbed or sectioned off. Um, and so some of this then, um, doesn't, you know, is not unfamiliar, uh, to me, but
And so some of this then doesn't, you know, is not unfamiliar to me, but the, and so the ones that are already, have already been approved by the regional, and that I feel comfortable taking them as a group.
Okay.
Okay, I move to approve the following policies. B E B B retreat meetings, B E C executive session, B E D A notification of meetings, B E D F voting, B E D G minutes, B E, B E E A annual budget hearing, B G D review of administrative regulations, B I A new school committee member orientation, B I B A conferences, conventions and workshops, B I D member compensation and expenses, B J legislative program, B K membership and affiliations, and to delete the following policy, B E D procedures for meetings.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, thank you very much. So we're now left with the elementary only, the oath of office, and the superintendence of Union Twenty-Six committee meetings. We'll consider this a first read. Are there thoughts or comments or feedback for the policy committee on these two policies?
When you say that these are, are, are new, what's, what does you mean by that?
Well, I, I think what it is, is that they have been updated. They're not new policies.
Okay.
But they've been some slight changes in perhaps wording or updates based on changes in requirements or laws or, I don't know. So I don't have, often, when we, when a policy's updated, you'll see the crossed out part, and I don't see that here, but it looks like it's referencing some mass general law.
I think the only one that's new, Elaine Braddy, who does a wonderful job of helping us with the policy committee, always puts the top if it's brand new. And B E A A does in fact say new policy at the top. I believe that one is.
Oh, you're absolutely right, Debbie. Thank you.
The, the school committee's oath of office is one that used to be voted for approval by the region. And Mr. Spence very rightfully pointed out that it's only the Amherst school committee and Pellum who have to take a vote of office. So that's why that's just simply been moved into your purview for approval.
So there was no policy before about the superintendency union? That's interesting. Okay.
Rick.
The last paragraph of the superintendency union talks about that the Union Twenty-Six school committee will determine the amount of service to be rendered by the superintendent and will apportion the payment of the superintendent between the two towns. First, it's not just the superintendent, it's the whole central office, right? And, and, and second, we have that, we went through this all last year to figure out, like, apportioning all of those costs between region, Amherst and Pellum. So I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure, and that process wasn't in any kind of a policy. It was like the, the sub, the budget subcommittee looking at it, Rob working on it, and just figuring it out. So I don't know about that last paragraph.
Should we vote?
When, when did you, I'm just, I want to write this down, I want to bring it back to the policy. When was it discussed? Was it last fall?
It would have been wound up last spring sometime during, during budget subcommittee meetings, and Rob Detwiler would have all that information, because he proposed that he would break them.
I don't remember the exact time that Mr. Detwiler brought it to the committee. They did come up with a new apportionment, which we are following in central office. I believe it's forty-five, forty-two, and I don't remember. It has been changed. And I, I believe that the reason this last piece was put in is to ensure that it will be looked at occasionally, to make sure that it.
By Amherst and Pellum.
By Amherst and Pellum.
Yeah.
To make sure that it stays current, or Union Twenty-Six, which is Amherst and Pellum together, so that it won't happen again that, because as you will remember, Mr. Hood, I don't believe there was a formula that they had used. It was just, here's what we do, fifty, forty-seven, three. And no one could really say where that came from. And I think this is to ensure that we always keep looking at that.
Yeah, but it does say will determine, so I don't know, it sounds like that, that committee's determining it. And also, it's leaving out the region, so it seems weird.
I wonder if we can just, between or among the entities, I don't know, the, the different structures.
Well, maybe, Lawrence, is there a policy subcommittee meeting coming up between now and our next?
Actually, at the last policy subcommittee meeting, we decided to not schedule one. Usually we do, but we decided not to schedule one until all the committees reorganize your assignments for who's going to go into what subcommittee.
But this is just a first reading, so.
Right. So I'm just wondering if you can bring it back at some point.
Oh, we could definitely do that.
Yeah.
And whenever it is, I'd like to continue serving on that, so.
Excellent, excellent. We appreciate that.
In fact, we did make committee appointments. Do we have to remake committee appointments?
I believe they ended up tabling that at the retreat.
Yes, we did.
So we'll probably do that at our.
I think some people had volunteered at a previous one.
That's right. Okay.
So some of them have been, okay. Thanks. But you are willing to serve on the policy committee, that's very helpful.
So if you, I mean, it would be helpful to bring it back and, and share that concern that.
I will.
Because that's a good question.
Yeah, I agree.
Other questions or concerns about other of these policies? Okay, all right. So we will move on, and hopefully we can get an answer to this question. Let me bring this up at our next Amherst meeting, which will be the eighteenth.
Yep, September eighteenth.
Okay.
And I'll make sure that we send this updated document out to people. I just kind of moved a few topics around, but it's still the same schedule that you, you received before.
Right, the dates are the same.
Same dates, so nothing has shifted there.
Okay. So we've talked about the calendar. Are there items for future agenda that everyone would like to see? Shabazz?
The district improvement plans are already on the calendar.
Yeah, for the September twenty-fifth, and that'll be the district plan and the school plans. And that's a joint meeting. So we'll do that together.
Lawrence?
I would like to have something about the language immersion proposal that we had.
Yeah.
Okay.
And get a follow-up here from Mark Rivera.
Okay.
We've been meeting, that's excellent.
Yes, we have.
See what's going on with that.
Yep.
Great. Okay. Rick?
I guess, you know, we have the Spanish program now, and I guess this year, we're dropping the lower grades, so it'd be nice to know, you know, what are we doing with that? And if I remember right, the original plan was by the time they get to middle school, they can skip a grade or something to go into Spanish. Is that still the plan or not the plan?
Okay.
And I'd just be interested.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay.
Mike? As far as concerns with the questions of disparities and equity, and I'm prepared to see what evolves out of the conversations and then see where that may present itself as an agenda item for, for us to, to look at and discuss. But I'll see how it goes with the, the meetings that are forthcoming.
Great. And that might even be something that we would want to discuss at a joint meeting, because I think that, you know, it's, it's bigger than the elementary schools.
True enough.
Great. Rick?
There might be various curriculum things, like what, what's the latest with math in the elementary schools? But does that schedule have on it, like, like when curriculum's going to be reviewed with us and that kind of thing? Because one thing I just wanted to mention, if maybe that's doing it, is, is, you know, we, we wanted to pre-schedule when we're going to talk about what.
Yep.
And so that we're not just talking about something just because we're asking for it.
Right.
And so that particularly also since the school personnel have a lot of advance notice as to when they're going to be presenting to us and that kind of thing. So that would be good to have if that's what that is.
What I could do too is I'm meeting with the principals tomorrow, and with, you know, a whole host of topics for the start of the school year, that we could take a look at this document and just, I can pose some of those specific questions of when would we be bringing forward, you know, a report around science? One would be, you know, an update, brief update around math at the elementary level. But I could bring those, and again, the same, language immersion, update on Spanish, and just knowing that we'll be talking much more around our equity work as we kind of move forward. But I'd be happy to check in.
Right, that would be really helpful. And also, that would be something, Rick, with this, with the additions of more joint meetings, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Thing, I think, which would be really helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else?
Not specifically on the agenda items, but in light of the policy items we've just approved, I have a few questions. And one is, is, I think I can get my own copy of Robert Rule's order, but if there is a preferred or something that is consistent with what would be referred to, I would appreciate knowing that, so I can get whatever one is, is consistent with what the chairperson and what is, will be used per, per these policies.
Okay.
Secondly, the, the way I'm reading the B I D item, I am concerned whether it needs to be brought up here for school committee approval. My attending the new member orientation session that I'm looking at for September, it is a free thing, but there is a meal component if you so choose. And if that, so again, I'm just wondering if that or any other expenses incurred in that trip, if that's something that I need to raise here, or if it's already considered a reimbursable expense.
That's a good question.
I'm going to let Debbie jump in if you don't mind.
Yeah, please, Debbie.
In the time that I've been serving as the school committee recording secretary, there's never been a vote to approve expenses for that particular trip, because it's expected of all school committee members. I believe that there's tacit agreement that you have to take this, those expenses will be reimbursed. I think if it's something beyond that, it would have to be approved by the full school committee.
And does that apply as well for the November joint mask thing that we made?
Yes, because we do always send folks to that. The one thing that, as Maria will remember, last year, everybody, I think just about every member was able to go. And so it was discussed at the school committee, because so many folks were wanting to go, and we had to plan for that financially, but it is something that's.
Wonderful opportunity.
Expected.
Could I also, do we have Robert's Rules?
Oh.
Would you?
Mr. Kuchar sent to me after the retreat, a little cheat, cheat thing that I'm going to bring next week, because he gave it for everybody.
Great.
I think it has a lot of the Robert's Rules on there, but I also have a few copies that I'm happy to give you one of, Shabazz, if you want it.
We also, Shabazz, I don't know, we got a pretty hefty book in our orientation. Did you get a copy of that?
Nope.
Okay, so I'll make sure.
Orientation book?
Yeah. I don't have an extra, but I was.
Bring it, we'll copy.
Yeah.
Gosh, we should have grabbed that.
Yeah.
From, from Mr. Kuchar. Can I ask, because I don't know if you were asking this question too, Shabazz, but what is, what's up with this labeling of these? Is there some rhyme or reason?
There is. It's based on the Massachusetts Association of School Committees.
Okay.
The way they put it together, we used to have ours numbered.
Okay, so B I D makes sense somewhere.
So they were different.
Yeah, it does. It actually has to do with.
Right.
I have, I have the same question. It does have to do with.
Right. For instance, all policies under B relate to school committee.
Right.
All policies under other things relate to students, faculty, et cetera. And then there's rhyme or reason to the rest of the letters, but I can't tell you what they.
Well, and I'm, I'm happy to ask these questions, so that we're all learning at the same time. But thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, on that note, if there's nothing else, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.